...of about 125 churches in Chicago. Where we try to break down barriers and bring help to communities. I'm also part of a financial institution called Thriving, where we try to help communities that have financial needs and debtors and such be well educated. So I want to thank you very much for all your work.
You're welcome.
When my parents immigrated here...
Mr. President, we were asked to deliver your application. These don't mean to be disrespectful.
Yes, sorry about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's pray. Father, thank you. Thank you for this gathering of men and women serving. We pray that they'll be equipped, that they will be able to start the year fresh, fully equipped, and cared for. I pray for their hearts to serve the men and women in their communities, help them to be focused, and continue to be strengthened by you. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing, please. Just for a moment, I would ask that we take a moment of silence in the memory of former President Jimmy Carter, for all of those who have lost their lives to the tariff attack in New Orleans on January 1st, and for all of those who have lost their lives and homes in the tragic fires in Los Angeles. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. This is a meeting for public...
The council now begin the public conference period, which is limited to a maximum of three minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for ultimate review. Our first speaker this morning is Celga Costa. Our next speaker is Nali Fernandez.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Nali Fernandez, and I reside in Jefferson Park. I stand before you today to express my strong opposition to the proposed amendments to the Welcoming City Ordinance. As a backup citizen who has held Chicago home for 24 years, arriving here at the April 14th, I am a top graduate of CPS at University of Illinois in Northern Michigan, Illinois University. My journey is a testament to the opportunity this city offers to immigrants like myself. I vividly recall November 9, 2015, when I was working at a Chicago middle school predominantly affected by immigrant students or those with immigrant parents. The atmosphere was heavy with fear. Students confided their anxieties about potential deportations under this upcoming administration. They feared being informed from the country they considered home, disrupting their aspirations for a better future. Fast forward to November 6 of this past year, I was teaching for year college students, many of whom are immigrants. They gestured about not seeing me next year, referencing the new selected deportation. Their fears mirrored both of my earlier students' concerns about derail professional goals and these prospects with turning to countries where opportunities are scarce. In both instances, the sanctuary status of Chicago provided an semblance of comfort. Knowing that our city welcomes and protects immigrants, offered reassurance that despite federal stress, Chicago students are safe haven. The proposed amendment, suggested by a fifteen federal authorities and upholding individuals involved in specific criminal activities, we can protect law-abiding immigrants from mass deportation. However, this perspective overlooks critical considerations. Quiet rates among immigrants. Studies have consistently shown that undocumented immigrants have lower crime rates compared to native-born citizens. Research indicates that immigrants are less likely to commit crimes that have lower incarceration rates than US-born individuals. This change will not only fail to protect our immigrant population, but will also open the door to racial profiling by allowing local law enforcement to collaborate with federal immigration authorities. We risk the targeting of individuals based solely on their race, ethnicity, and perceived immigration status. This creates a climate of fear and injustice, disproportionately affecting Black and Brown communities, even those who are US citizens who have legal status. The proposed changes could lead to violations of the Illinois Trust Act, and infringe upon individuals' due process rights. By involving local law enforcement in federal immigration matters, we risk undermining state laws to protect our communities. Introducing this amendment, it fosters fear and uncertainty, leading to increased distrust between immigrant communities and local authorities. This erosion of trust can have detrimental effects on public safety, as individuals may become reluctant to report crimes or cooperate with law enforcement, making our city less safe for everyone. Chicago has long been a beacon for those seeking a better future, a city enriched by the contributions of immigrants. All to our sanctuary status is to betray the values of inclusivity and protection for the citizens. I urge you to vote no on the proposed amendment.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good morning, Mr. Johnson and Chicago City Council members. I've spoken before you on multiple occasions about the dangers of fur farming and how packing thousands of wild fur-bearing animals into miserably tight cages can cause drastic results where viruses can jump from animals to humans and create next pandemics. This is a very critical reason why fur farming should be banned and why Chicago should pass the bill to ban the sale of new fur in our fine city. While I'm preparing this statement on this bitter cold morning of only eight degrees, there are beautiful animals languishing in cold metal cages on wire floors with no protection from the extreme temperatures or elements. They don't even have basic creature comforts. I'm going to read a few quotes from the Fur Street Alliance. Every year, tens of millions of animals are raised and killed for their fur. The vast majority of fur sold globally comes from farmed animals such as mink foxes, raccoon dogs, rabbits, and chinchillas. Keeping wide-ranging predatory animals in small cages causes severe animal welfare problems, such as self-immolation and infected wounds. The confinement in tiny battery cages on fur farms prevents animals from expressing their basic natural behaviors, such as running and hunting for food. The stress of the caging conditions and fear of human causes animals to exhibit a high number of stress-related welfare problems. Newer scientific reports have indicated that severe health problems are inherent to fur production and that animals on all fur farms have been conscious exhibit physical and behavioral abnormalities, such as infected wounds, missing limbs from biting incidents, eye infections, dense feet, malformities, cell mutilation, cannibalism of dead siblings or offspring, and other stress-related behavioral tendencies. This behavior, as a result of stress, occurs on all fur farms and is expressed as pacing along decayed walls, repetitive circling, or nodding of the head. There are plenty of man-made synthetic materials that can keep humans much warmer than the skin of an animal who is born into this world simply to live in filthy squalor and then be killed in a horrific and painful manner. While I'm presenting to you now, I am in the warmth of my home, and you all are in the warmth of Chicago City Hall. Please think about those who are so much less fortunate than ourselves, and let's take this easy step to prevent their suffering while at the same time helping to stop another epidemic. Thank you again for your time and consideration, and please stay warm.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is a Chicago conservative.
Good morning, Mr. Johnson. I'm going to start off with this question. Who are you loyal to? The American citizens here in Chicago or the illegal immigrants here in Chicago? The sanctuary law that Brandon Johnson allowed has gone criminals, drug dealers, and now terrorists. We have terrorists in our city now, some here in City Hall as we speak. Chicago police investigated and prosecuted by...
Mr. Conservative, could you just hold your comments for a second, please? Stop this time. Just stop this time for a second. Mr. Conservative, could you just hold for a second? Those of you that are in the chamber today, that is your only warning. If there's another shout-out during any presentation, I will clear the chambers. It's just that simple. If there's shouting coming from the chambers, I will put the meeting in recess, and we will clear the chambers. Mr. Chicago Conservative, you may rebegin.
Thank you. You're welcome, sir. Appreciate that. As I was saying, we have terrorists in our city now, some here in City Hall as we speak. There have been reports, Chicago Police investigated a discovery of explosive device on 35th and Kane Drive at 10:56 a.m., and there a bomb unit had to be called. And let me remind the people, in 2021, Al Qaeda said that they inspired to attack big cities like Chicago and New York with ghost guns and using trucks and things like this with pipe bombs. So this stuff is serious. And you want to know Brandon Johnson's response is, "Oh, I'm a Bears fan." Or "I'm a Bears child." Look, are you with the CTU or do you want to be the mayor? Now, I know you are bad as a mayor, but let's just be honest, man. You've got to choose one. You're either going to be the mayor, do your job, or you're going to be a part of the teachers' union. And something tells me that you're not going to be the mayor, and you want that $5 million pension when you retire with the Chicago Teachers Union. But let me just continue. The people here, I see a lot of your supporters here today. And I'm going to ask you guys, what have Democrats ever done for you for these past 70 years? What have the Democrats ever done for you? I'm going to ask you guys, who's the bigger fool? The fool or the fool that follows the fool for 70-plus years doing absolutely nothing for African-American subjects yourselves? This don't stop at illegals. Our babies continue to be victims of crime, murder, and things like drugs, gangs. If you vote for the Democratic Party again, I'm talking about Black people here making the same mistake over and over again. Don't complain when the streets aren't clean. Don't complain when nothing is getting done because you guys still motivate people like Brandon Johnson, and he does not care. He cares more about, I don't know what. What do you care about, Mr. Brandon Johnson? Do you care more about your pocket or do you care about the people in Chicago? You care more about illegals than the people in Chicago. We are from here. You probably owe them more than us. Like, what are you doing, man? You're surprised that you got a 14% approval rating? You're already a terrorist, man. This is serious. This is on top of what Lori Lightfoot has already done to Chicago. You're adding on to the problem. Do you want to help us or not? Because the people are getting fed up with this, man. The Democratic Party cannot save us. Only God can save us. You guys understand me? Only God can save us. People, you guys are asking for handouts, and I hear you people over here saying, "Oh, I don't need a big one. I need a little slice." These are the people you associate yourself with.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Salim Tekai.
Good morning. As a first-generation American, a daughter of immigrants, it's heartbreaking to see the city my parents immigrated to, a city they chose because it is a sanctuary city, is at risk of no longer being a safe haven. My father fled Syria to save his own life. He went to Greece as an undocumented migrant, then to America, specifically Chicago, to escape being involuntarily drafted into the Syrian army. His brother remained in Syria, and he was killed, martyr for a country that has long ignored the suffering of its own people, under the dictator Bashar al-Assad, who is responsible for the death of over 700,000 people and the displacement of over 12 million people. I often think of what would happen if my father did stay in Syria, but my story and my family's story isn't isolated. It is the reality of countless immigrants who come to Chicago fleeing unimaginable dangers, seeking a better life and safer life for themselves and their families. Immigrants do not leave their homes unless they know that staying in their country is more dangerous than the uncertainty of immigration. Distracting people of their security when they come to America seeking safety is wrong on so many levels, given that this country is built on the backs of immigrants and slaves. I did say, I said immigrants and slaves. It is certain to say that this country cannot prosper without immigrants, especially those who are undocumented and do all the jobs that Americans refuse to do. I urge you all to vote against any cooperation and collaboration between ICE and CPD. Voting in favor of this collaboration will strip families apart. I don't want to see my families and loved ones being deported and their lives being destroyed because Chicago is going back on its claim to be a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Jordan Esparza Kelly.
My name is Jordan Esparza Kelly, representing CARE Chicago, the Council for American Islamic Relations, and I am a resident of the 30th Ward. I want to thank Ruth Cruz's staff for returning my call regarding the amendments to the Welcoming City Bill. Self-hating cowards such as Aldous Ray Lopez and Tabarez want to turn our city into a hell for migrants, who are not only Latin, by the way. CARE Chicago has 40 to 50 asylum cases currently. What do we tell these people and families if we don't remain a sanctuary? Plus, our economy cannot handle mass deportations. We, as Chicagoans, must direct our energy and organizing towards those who are actually oppressing us and divesting from us. It is easy to turn new migrants into an enemy for us residents, but it's harder to look our own local government in the eyes and say, "Why? Why have you ignored us for 80 years? Why haven't you fully addressed homelessness, which predominantly affects Black Chicago residents?" It is wrong to change this bill and reject people seeking a better life and would severely limit my organization's ability to take new immigration and asylum cases. Do not do your jobs haphazardly and put us residents in a predicament where we're fighting against each other. Put the work in and equally distribute resources so that we may all live pleasantly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Good morning, folks. Mr. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Martin Levine.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Martin Levine. I'm a resident of the 48th Ward, and I'm representing the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs. The CUA has for years been a strong supporter of immigrant rights and of Welcoming Ordinance, but I come also this morning to see personally. The last years of raising against immigrants to this country have reminded me of something I really have forgotten in many of my 60 years. My mother came to this country from the other world. She came fleeing a country that was at war. She came fleeing because her father had to flee and came to this country before. And I have never thought about this until the last five years or so, when I began to wonder if I had to prove who my mother was as a citizen. I don't have a document to that. She is a citizen. She's voted in every election I've supported her since I was a little girl. But if you asked me to demonstrate that, I could not do that. And she would be at risk of being challenged if she was a jail walker, if she had a motor vehicle fine, and if there were changes were proposed. I think about this often, more often than I should, as a 67, 68, now 78-year-old man. I also know that Chicago has been a welcoming city. In my work for the Jewish community and with the Jewish community, we were grateful for the city's partnership in resettling 10,000 people fleeing from the Soviet Union, which is what we're being praised as Jews. This city was a home, became a home, and they flourished and helped build this city and the whole Chicago metro area. So I urge you to not give up, because this is a moment of difficult politics. This is a moment when forces in this country of hate and intolerance have been on the rise and turn to this city and see it as an enemy. It is not an enemy, totally. It's only an enemy if it gives up on its values. So I urge you, if you come to vote on this proposal, to vote no. I thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Elias Tepeda.
Thank you for the time to address you all today. My name is Elias Tepeda from Gilson Defense and Access, and I'm here to ask you to vote no on the amendment to a certain line in our city code related to Welcoming City Status. If you care about truth, you'll vote against this amendment because it is predicated on baseless fear-mongering about refugees, people who legally deny asylum applications and who have already been subjected to human trafficking by the federal government and southern states and up here in Chicago. If you care about combating racism, you'll vote against this amendment because it discusses racialized people, undocumented immigrants, as though we represent particular dangers to the city, when in fact, undocumented immigrants have lower rates of criminality than the general population, in addition to having higher rates of entrepreneurship than the general population, and paying more in taxes per capita while receiving less in social services than citizens do. In response to this amendment, we're truly concerned about criminal behavior affecting the city for decades. We might consider focusing on their own backers, some of whom are currently indicted on criminal corruption charges, instead of trying to streamline the persecution of their own people through immigration proceedings, which are civil and not criminal matters. If you care about public safety, you'll vote against this amendment because it is inspiring fear and terror in some of the city's most hard-working residents. Because as the Chicago Police Department Office said in a recent memo, it erodes trust in law enforcement and will deter people from reporting crimes to police. If you care about following law, you'll vote against this amendment because it runs contrary to state law, specifically the Illinois Trust Act, and will pit municipal law enforcement against colleagues within the state police. If you care about voters' will and the security of your own jobs, I suggest that you might consider voting against the amendment after you look around and see these packed chambers with your constituents who showed up as early as 7:00 a.m., mostly who oppose a measure who will not lose energy on the issue or forget how you vote today. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Leo Pargo.
There will be order in the chamber.
My name is Leo Pargo. I'm a leader of the Redcom Corps for the Emancipation of Humanity here in Chicago. We're calling on all of the decent people to say no in the name of humanity and refuse to accept a fascist America, to stop Trump aga fascist program, saying no to mass deportation. Todo somos ilegales. You are all illegal. This proposal is not city politics as usual. Fascism, yes. Fascism is being inaugurated next week. Trump, Roman, and the local lackeys like Raymond Lopez and Tabarez are collaborators with this fascism. And what if we make an example out of this sanctuary city as a battering ram for what? For massive roundup in deportation? All of the decent people who want to be an end to this oppression, to this madness, who don't want to see our immigrant brothers and sisters who have been forced to come here from all over the world, be rounded up and hauled off, and families destroyed because of that, need to stand up and flood the streets, January 20th and 21st, saying no in the name of humanity we refuse to accept a fascist America. They want to make an example out of Chicago, make it ground zero for mass deportation? Well, I'll tell you what, we do need to make Chicago an example of people finding their courage and their backbone, standing up with collective action and self-sacrificing struggles with the goal and aim of defeating this fascism. And this for everybody in the room today, particularly all of the bootlickers and mad Trump supporters here. All the Black people and Ashisos in Chicago who are caught up, foolish, calling for these deportations, quit sounding like the rabbit-white races. And wake up and get off of that garbage.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please call our last speaker.
Our next speaker is Esther Martinez.
Hi, good morning, Chicago.
Good morning.
My name is Esther Martinez. I am with the Illinois Coalition for Immigrants and Refugee Rights. I am here to speak against Alderman Lopez's proposed amendment to the Welcoming City Ordinance. Chicago government is smart and is strong. Alderman Lopez claims to want to protect undocumented people and only go after dangerous people, but the people he's targeting have only been arrested or charged, which even have been convicted of anything. Anything turning people over twice with the United States people, their fair date in court, they will be stopped in ICE detention, unable to pay bond that will cost thousands of dollars if they get a bond at all, and unable to show up for their court dates and find the chair, the change against them. What part of innocent unproven guilty does Alderman Lopez not understand? As all the city considers to reject Alderman's attempt to deny people their basic constitutional rights, because that is what it is, constitutional rights, and to leave the Welcoming City Ordinance alone and start working on funding of local neighborhood schools, public housing, and what we need in Chicago, okay? I am a Chicago resident. I am not a terrorist. I am not a criminal. I am here for all, because we need a government that serves our communities and what we need. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for all the public comments. All right, very well. Thank you very much. Now then, if you are not aware of any other unfinished business, we can now go to miscellaneous business. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am aware of one item of miscellaneous business that was filed by the automatic duo of Lopez and Tabarez, and I defer to them.
Very well. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
On behalf of the dynamic duo, yes, and in accordance with Rule 41, in order to limit collateral capture by ICE in our communities as they search for their priority targets, I move to discharge from committee, O20023-0004222, an amendment to the Welcoming City Ordinance by roll call vote, and I will call the question on the...
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Aldo Fuentes.
To table the motion to discharge by roll call vote.
Very well. So there is a motion on the floor. Just a second. There was a motion to discharge an item. There is a subsequent motion to lay that item on the table, which is permitted by our rules. So the motion to lay this item on the table, and you are asking by a roll call vote?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Very well. So there's a motion to lay the... The motion that was previously offered up by Alderman Lopez, there was a motion to lay that item on the table. So if you vote no, you wish to proceed with the initial motion to discharge. If you vote yes, to lay this item on the table, you wish not to vote on the discharging of the item. So a no vote means you wish to return back to the initial motion to discharge this item. If you vote yes, you wish not to take up this item through the motion to discharge. Madam Clerk, yes, please use your e-vote applications to record your votes at this time. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Please refresh your device. Please refresh your device. The voting is now open. I will now call on those who have not used the e-devise for a voice vote. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alduin Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. All have voted. The voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are 39 ayes, 11 ayes. The motion to lay the item in the motion on the table has passed. Alderman Mitchell, are there, is there a motion to reconsider Alderman Mitchell?
Motion to reconsider vote.
All right. There's a motion to reconsider this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, anything else?
Mr. President, except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware any further of miscellaneous business.
Very well then, for the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an order to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Be it ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, February 19, 2025, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North West South Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from after its passage. Reverend Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so order. On the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Alderman Mitchell, anything else?
No.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. As was previously noticed with the city clerk, as a Rule 41 as well, and in accordance with Rule 41, in order to limit collateral captures by ICE in our communities as they search for their priority targets, I move to discharge from community, oh, from committee, oh, 2023-0004222, an amendment to the welcoming city ordinance by a roll call vote, and I will call the question on the mat.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
To table the motion to discharge by roll call vote.
Very well. So there is a motion on the floor. Just a second. There was a motion to discharge an item. There was a subsequent motion to lay that item on the table, which is permitted by our rules. So the motion to lay this item on the table, and you are asked by a roll call vote?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Very well. So there's a motion to lay the motion that was previously offered up by Alderman Lopez. There was a motion to lay that item on the table. So if you vote no, you wish to proceed with the initial motion to discharge. If you vote yes, to lay this item on the table, you wish not to vote on the discharging of the item. So a no vote means you wish to return back to the initial motion to discharge this item. If you vote yes, you wish not to take up this item through the motion to discharge. Madam Clerk, yes, please use your e-vote applications to record your votes at this time. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Please refresh your device. Please refresh your device. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alduin Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. All have voted. The voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are 39 ayes, 11 ayes. The motion to lay the item in the motion on the table has passed. Alderman Mitchell, are there, is there a motion to reconsider Alderman Mitchell?
Motion to reconsider vote.
All right. There's a motion to reconsider this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, anything else?
Mr. President, except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware any further of miscellaneous business.
Very well then, for the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an order to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Be it ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, February 19, 2025, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North West South Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from after its passage. Reverend Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so order. On the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed.
Get notified when we have new content.